Good morning. I apologize for not getting my report up to you until this morning. I'm sure you probably don't have any questions on it, but do you? You're welcome to call me anytime. Are there any questions at all?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. I need to mention those various reports. We want to talk about what about sales tax. It just gave you the opinion of down, also raining. It's not in your packets. If you look at the sales tax that I gave you was through the end of December. Since then, we've got a couple of checks. First one wasn't so bad. We were up by about seventy-five thousand. The second check we got this month is the one that disturbed me because it was down by over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the last year. That still counts against the fourteen budget. This is part of what we budgeted because as you recall, we budgeted, and this was changed a number of years ago, the formula where we end up counting Januaries and Februaries against the fourteen. Well, it looks like we had some pretty good growth going. We've gone backwards a little bit. Talked to this nearest state association of counties. They're going to look into it, see what's going on. Put a call into the Department of Taxation and Finance. And I also surveyed a number of counties around the state to see what's happening with them. And it's kind of all over the place. Some counties were up as much as sixty-six percent. Some were down similar to us. And I think this all goes back to, and those of you that have been on board, heard me say this before, I think this is where the sales tax department kind of sets stuff. Do different counties at different times to distribute out, make it a little bit. I never could get an honest answer from them on how much we get until the end of the year. We just have to rely on them to tell us this is what we got. And in the past, we've been up as much as fifty percent in counties and we're down a little bit. So I really think this, in my personal opinion, the sales tax department might be able to tend it to the different departments, different counties, just to balance things out. It is what it is. Right now, we're down seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. And the second check this month, so for the month, it goes down about six-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand over the last year. And that's going to, that's towards our fourteen budget. So while we're still okay on our fourteen budget, from what I can see, we had budgeted twenty-seven thousand, one hundred. We don't make a similar hit February, we'll make a bullet, we'll definitely make that goal. With this county against the fourteen budget, it's a little over twenty-six million. And last year in February, we got a million and seven. As long as we don't take too big a hit next month, we will. We'll make our budget, but what this does is cut into any surplus, any boundness we feel if we get not counted on and put into our budget. So we'll just have to see what happens with the February payments. But like I said, we're still waiting here for some other counties. But the trends are all over the place. Washington County was down forty-three percent. Chamon County was up sixty-six percent. I'll figure. No way to really tell. Just wanted to give you that information. So we can see this report next month, hopefully. February may be all right, but we would January, February all right once we've done that. We'll point that out to you soon. Occupancy was down slightly over the month before. Not by a lot, it was only down about twelve-hundred dollars, circa twenty-five thousand. For the year, we're still running about almost eighty-four thousand over the last year. And we'll have probably another quarter here, something else to do for the year. The other thing that I have in there is my common budget. Who we are in your division of the budget and cash flow. Did we ask any question?
What did you got on the report?
Did we ask any for the sales tax?
Well, somebody asked, we asked, we talked about that one. These reports that come in for January, this one is from November and December sales. And when we get the, they report, you know, they pay the sales tax, and they get it reported in January. So this is November and December sales, when gas was still not moving as much as the gas during January. So some of it got, but not to the tune of it, reported a million dollars.
Do you know percentage of the tax those taxes provide from gasoline sales? I mean, if this were to continue on to about a percent a gallon, is this going to be a large shortfall of that?
Down. I think so. It was hard. I've never gotten figures, no mistake, never been able to get figures on how much gas is reported in the account. As far as petroleum sales, it's really difficult to say just in all that. But yes, it will definitely cut into it, obviously. I mean, it was a little percent a gallon.
Just the numbers are a little strange with the sales tax. The reason Mark said is because we still believe that the state plays with money as it says how it allocates it out. I wouldn't be surprised to see our numbers go up in the next few months based upon the amount they give us in a different period. But one of the things that you would have to ask yourself, if we drop sixty-four percent in one month on sales tax, why did we not see any difference on the occupancy tax? You know, the occupancy tax runs a little similar to the sales tax. You know, you're in that same kind of area. We don't see it on the occupancy side. We're only dealing with sales tax.
David Brerker.
I have one resolution I'd like to ask you for. I sent off some information on it. I spoke to Mr. Yonah. It's in the town of Plac de Rosa. We came across a Lincoln tax bill going back to two thousand thirteen for most parts of hospital, Plac de Rosa. And we're investigating this because it's been originally a very small amount, fifty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. It's for a building with a hospital attached, but that doesn't use it this time, it's been abandoned. Water hasn't been shut off, like the, there's a small amount going into, like, the water shut off the building. So this is just a minimum charge that most towns have for the service being there. And it was fifty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. For some reason, it got overlooked. There was a lot of changes in the administration of hospital going on in two thousand thirteen, twelve, and thirteen, as many of you may recall. I think it was just overlooked. What I've asked for, and I spoke to people at the hospital and everyone who does this, is see if we can at least get the penalties and interest canceled on this. They're willing to make a base amount, and that belongs, actually belongs to county now. We are a vacant town, we are going back to the thirteen, so we'll go to the county for fifty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. The amount that we would be reducing is a hundred and six to seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that's figured based on being passed in February on the final board. So that's the amount we're going to cancel. Obviously, the biggest amount is a hundred and fifty dollars for a period we put in. The rest is just seventy dollars.
We'll plug this in here now. There's a second. We have a discussion. Do you know all the areas?
I have all of them. I will make sure the county attorney has the perfect information under the county tax law.
Any questions, Mr. Yonah? Act sales, how are we?
We've got the searches ready. We're preparing the social notices to allow, to allow the certification.
Will we do that? Can I let up?
This year, yeah, one at a time, one out, one, two at a time.
Now, are we going to send out one file or do we, do we all want you to do that?
Before we? Before we send them? Yeah, that's the certified notice.
I did have one more on, right? Before the portfolio did.
Right.
Charlie? How many you got? How many are up for taxes?
When we start, it's going to be about three hundred. Obviously, that gets ruled down. Unless we send those notices out.
Do you have a date scheduled?
We don't. It's going to depend on when we set these, what the last day they dropped. Yes, probably in May or something like that.
That will be the?
That's for the first ones in June, then we'll look at another one probably in October.
The ten and eleven, definitely going to be good.
No, I mean several. We do say.
Oh, you're going to ten and eleven.
Right, yeah. The elevens are still being searched. We're not finished. I'd rather go ahead and move on this, keep them small. Auctions tend to go better when you only have seventy-eighty properties than when you have a couple, maybe a hundred, thirty, or a hundred. You lose a lot of interest to people who's that many, were there that long. We found, we have better, some better results, like in the smaller auctions.
Does she run out?
Yeah, I have a question. Mike, what is a gasoline sales tax based on? I mean, you pay three dollars a gallon, the food sales tax, what do they use for?
Oh, sorry. Eight percent on the price of the gallon. But in Chicago, what's your?
No, I mean, you're paying three dollars a gallon for it.
Yeah.
That includes eight percent sales tax.
Right.
But where?
What point does that take?
Where do you start with the sales tax? I mean, by lighting or?
I'm not sure if that's on the base amount that the district or by the state taxes. Because there's federal tax in there.
Yeah.
It's probably not on that, and probably on the.
I think it's on the way, you looked in this before.
Yeah.
I think it's your base amount that they pay when they buy it.
When they buy it.
Before, pre, it's a pre-tax amount.
Right.
And then, so if they're paying two dollars a gallon, we're getting four percent of that two dollars.
Then you add, I don't know, federal excise tax, we're on the state tax.
Right. They're paying two dollars a gallon, they're marking it up or whatever.
Yeah.
Or whatever the mark.
They're paying on markup as well. So what they're selling in minus the taxes, the excise.
David Brerker from Martin. Thank you. Charlie? I'm sorry. Can I add?
I just, this one actually should have been done, and you can tell you, and that was my fault. Like, Chris brought it up. At the year-end meeting, we moved the resolution to move two-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, seven hundred, that was budgeted for this project, former in Essex, the Essex Sewer Project. Then Chris, what I told Chris was that he had to make a decision about where he was getting the rest of it, which was a hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. He said at BPW that he wanted it out of his CHIPS funding for this year. So that's what we need. We need a resolution authorizing the award of the four forty-one from the, for the Duchian Contracting, which was a little bitter. And then the hundred-and-ninety-seven, six fifty would come out of Chris's CHIPS funding. And the two forty-three, seven hundred was budgeted from previous years. So that makes up the total for that project. So we need a resolution authorizing that.
Will we move that? Will you like to move on? I'm sure this is a town or a county highway.
This is a county highway. This is an icy situation that occurs in Essex that runs off of a bank. It's been an ongoing issue. There's apparently a bank that runs down onto the road, freezes. It's created some ice hazard there on a regular basis, I guess. It is something that Chris feels has to be addressed.
Further discussion? Do you know all the areas?
I. President Billy? After answering questions.
Any questions for Dan? About Charlie?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I'm seeking a resolution to forgive two school relettees that got put onto the town and county tax bill in the town of Northell with the West Valley Limited Partnership. They should have been in the wholly exempt portion of the law because the town has a pilot agreement with West Valley. We did get the, did get them put in section eight, and the wholly exemption added to that parcel for the town and county law. But it was too late to remove the school relettees that went on.
Will I move that? Will I? Then I'll have to make a discussion. Do you know all the areas?
I wanted to talk to you today about our county directors. The president of our county director, Real Property Association, had a chance to meet with the legislatures regarding the two thousand fourteen, fifteen state budget. And their topic of discussion was the property tax freeze rebate checks that came out last fall. The state had, everyone in our county has received theirs, but yeah, across the state, they still haven't all been nailed out yet. Not everyone has received theirs. Our county director wanted to speak to the legislatures about this program because they really feel that there's a lot of work to be done on this program. They feel that the equity with the property tax freeze rebate checks really isn't there. They apply these to mobile homes, and in a lot of cases, mobile homes don't even pay taxes to schools. But yet, they're receiving a tax credit for that because they're giving them twenty-five to fifty percent of the average rebate check that everyone else receives, even though they might not be paying taxes. They also didn't take into account the correction of error process that's done through the real property tax law regarding this tax freeze credit. And when you register for STAR, how that process works and how corrections are done. They want everything dealt with through the Department of Tax and Finance. But if you truly weren't qualified for a STAR, it should be done through local real property tax. And you, as county supervisor, should be able to make those kinds of decisions on whether there's a correction made or not. And they really feel that, that they really could expand tax relief through local mandate relief rather than putting everything on the local taxpayer. The mandate relief would take care of some of our property tax issues. And the legislation should be introduced also by the Tax and Finance to take over the administration of the basic STAR exemptions. It seems redundant to our organization to have to register with your local assessor or to apply to your local assessor and then re-register with the State Department of Tax and Finance. Tax and Finance is privy to a, to a statewide database where your local assessor is only privy to the county database. They, the state is more able to check and see if it's primary residence and if someone owns more than one, one property. It's become quite burdensome to your local assessors and time-consuming to administer the STAR exemption. They also believe that the enhanced, people with enhanced STAR exemption would be better registering with the state and having those same checking balances. It also needs to be reported to your local assessor if somebody does have a residency issue because there are other exemptions that apply to residency. You know, your veteran's exemption and your agent exemption should all be on the primary residence too. And if the state would share that information with your local assessors, then they can make determinations on some of these other exemptions that they would have to look at. And it's not clearly defined by the state. This part of the legislation was taken out of the bill before it was passed on what actually is a primary residence. I think it needs to be clearly defined by the legislation so that the assessors can make that determination. So we're hoping that the legislature will take some, a lot of those things into account and maybe refine that process a little bit for everyone. And the governor has proposed a new property tax credit. It hasn't been passed into law yet, but when I looked at this, some of the restrictions on this that he's proposing is that your income needs to be below two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Your municipalities must stay within the cap for that property tax to qualify. And I'm assuming that it must be your primary residence. I've had a hard time finding anything on this, but most everything else that's come about has been the primary residence. This also is going to be made available to renters if it does pass. And what a rent will have to do is they will have to figure out if six percent of their income, if that much of their rent, they'll have to figure out how much of their rent actually goes to property taxes. And if that is six percent of their income in order to qualify. Now, if a property tax exceeds six percent of your income, you would receive a credit of fifty percent of the difference with a maximum of two thousand dollars for this credit. So I don't have income information for any of our taxpayers. But the median income for Essex County is forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So six percent of that is two thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars. So you would essentially receive a credit if that were your income for half of the difference in what you actually pay in property taxes and the twenty-eight hundred and forty-three dollars if that were your income. Now, I took the average assessed value for each town, and then I took the tax rate for the county and figured out an average county tax bill. And then I took the tax rate for the town and figured out an average town bill. It's important to note with your town bill that I included town, highway, and fire because everybody pays that. But not everybody pays water in sewer districts, actually have to be in the district. So that's why the tax rate looks like that. And then I figured out an average school tax bill, two for, for each town. And I used the tax rate that your town encompasses the most of. Now, the town of Wilmington is in Lake Classic and Osable. I use Osable because the majority of the properties are in the Osable School District. So you get an adjusted, and then I, and then I took off the STAR exemptions from the school tax bill and came up with an average tax bill overall for somebody under sixty-five and somebody over sixty-five. And then I took away the twenty-eight forty-three for the median. And you can see by town who would have qualified in this scenario and who wouldn't. And it's interesting that there are eight towns that were not qualified under this scenario. Now, anybody, if you wanted to look at your individual bill, you would take your income times the six percent and then figure out what you paid in county, town, and school taxes and villages, if you live in a village. And then you would have to know who stayed in the cap. If somebody didn't stay in the cap, you'd have to back that number out. If we back out the county tax, there's four additional towns that were not qualified for this.
I'm just, I'm interrupting, or I guess I am. Don't forget fire districts. If they didn't stay within the cap, we got backed out.
That's true.
And I've got two that didn't. So I mean, that's why when this thing hits the press, it's got to be well explained or whatever you get. I mean, I got three different fire district tax rates. I got two highway tax rates. I got townwide, town outside of the, and people are going to see these numbers, and they're going to be called amazed. I'm not paying this amount and showing the act, so.
Right, right. There's, there's a lot that goes into play here. Now, I'm using the average assessed value. Everybody's not assessed for the average assessed value. You have to look at your, you really have to look at your own taxes. And anybody can see their taxes in a nutshell on our image made website, on the Real Property website. I encourage anybody who reads about this to go there and see what their taxes were, or call our office and we can tell you what they were. Beware of a school re levy. If anybody has a school re levy on their town and county tax bill, you can't count it twice. You have to back it out. And it's also important to know that I'm not including any exemptions here except a STAR. If you have an agent or veteran's exemption or any other kind of exemption, that's going to reduce the amount that you pay too. I think it's important to know too, you know, that the state capped STAR exemption a few years back. And they said that you can't save any more than two percent than you did the year before. In two thousand and four, for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen, New York State saved over two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents by capping that STAR exemption. The state saves that money and the burden goes back to the taxpayers of Essex County.
Any questions on this new proposal by the governor?
Yes.
As a matter of fact.
You're right.
Let me ask you this. I'll get the calls already. People got school rebate, rebate check this year.
Okay.
How's that going to work for the towns?
That'll.
I should even find the form online as to how they, if you stay within the cap of your town.
Right. Then you get the difference in the bill from last year to this year.
But they're going to have to take into consideration the fire districts.
That's correct. That's correct.
So the county didn't stay within the cap.
Right.
So that's going to be out.
That's going to be out over the board too. Yeah. And if, if everyone had stayed within the cap, then it would be the difference in your tax bill from last year to this year would be the amount that you would get. Or what you get the greater of the two, the difference in your tax bill or the rate of inflation, which last year was one point four six percent.
And that's the check comes out what?
That comes out usually in October. Yeah. That's when they were received in our county last year, was October. Now, last year was just school. This year, it would be schools, towns, counties, all the, all the taxing authorities.
One check or will they issue separate?
Yeah, issue one check this year.
One check. Right, and then you're left with.
Right.
If they were over the left, you'd have to.
That's correct.
County.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan?
I'm confused. Maybe I'm the only one. But I had a call from someone. I don't know where, right now. I was with you, going through what these numbers were, and then I lost them. So we had a call from somebody asking about the rebate check. Where do we start?
Well, there's, there's two different things. I, I think that this one hasn't been passed into law. So it's important to note that this is the governor's proposal, but it hasn't been passed into law. Now, there's a tax freeze credit check that, that he came out with last year that was passed into law. That's the difference in your tax bill from one year to the next, anyone who stayed within a cap. And of course, it's just your primary residence. This one is a proposal going forward that hasn't been passed yet. This is based on your income. If your property taxes are more than six percent of your income, you get fifty percent of the difference.
So this is not for renters, like that you were talking about?
This, this, this is going to include renters if it passes. Yes.
Um, with, with, is this going to be in addition to the two percent check you're going to get or?
This is in addition to.
So they could be a distraction, maybe.
I'm not sure if this is going to be a check or a credit on your income tax. That's something I'm not sure about. If it's an actual check mailed to people or not, I'm, I'm not sure.
Mr. Cobb?
Where are those the shared services?
That's in your tax freeze credit check.
And this would be in addition to your tax freeze credit if it passes?
Yes.
We have to separate.
Yeah. And I, you know, when I look at the median income, you can see there's eight towns here that, that are on, that don't qualify. But it's, it really is on an individual basis. Anyone who's going to look at this really needs to look at their, their own income and their own taxes that they pay on your primary residence.
All the negatives. The negative numbers just so it wants to drop off. The negative number. That represents negative. That means you're... Was number out?
On the renters' condition this, okay, the tax benefit for the property I own is going to go to my...
Yes.
Yeah.
Because it's not your...
The taxes.
Yeah.
This one got the taxes.
Well, you're, listen, if you calculate your rent, you're included, you're included when your taxes are, you hope, right? If you're getting seven hundred dollars a month for a apartment, you got to be figuring what you're paying for the tax for water and sewer. That's right. So people are going to make out like a bandit or a one now cry if I, for some reason, don't pay anything. It's like what the county thinks.
Again, I'm...
And then it didn't work.
Yeah.
Because the owner, it's the owner who pays the tax on the income, and then who pays the tax on the property. The tenant pays taxes on their income and gets a tax refund, but the owner paid for it. There's something wrong with that picture and shape.
The average median income in the county is forty-seven thousand four hundred and two. So this Ohio would say, it's been harder. So people of Ohio, what I read, would qualify for any of this? Is that what it says?
No, no, but yeah, that's only on a county's average basis. Individually, there may be people that you're not involved with.
Right. Some may and some they not. If you use the average assessment and the median income, this is how, this is how it works out. But of course, I don't have each individual person's income, each individual's assessment together to figure out when you did.
Any questions?
Let me do it. Let me just give you a, let's say for a state argument, you had somebody that was thinking twenty thousand, had an income of twenty thousand a year. So six percent of that's twelve hundred. If their property taxes combined were three thousand, then they would get the difference between three thousand and twelve hundred, eighteen hundred, or half of that, right? So they would get a nine hundred dollar credit.
Is that gross income? Would that be gross?
Which includes your...
What about water and sewer? Property tax only.
Again, it's...
Right. And you think that shows...
Whatever your final tax bill is. And then, of course, if that tattoo jurisdiction didn't meet the cap, you would have the back to come around.
See, my town, the whole, what's included, the town pad, the highway, the town general, highway, townwide, park, town, town general, park, town general, then water.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah.
Fire district here, they're excluded.
And you used your average fire district tax in here for the sake of this. But I included county too. Now, if you back out the county, we've got another four here who would be in the negative number. And the other numbers that would receive them are greater than the new. I use, for Newcomb, I use just the home state tax rate because most primary residents just have the home state exemption.
Man?
Okay. I think the structure stands a little bit up. People who are in the water and sewer district, they are better off in this scenario. The user fees are less, and the tax on that district are more. Correct?
No, because overkill the cap. Well, now, if you stay within the cap.
If you stay within the cap, you're paying a little more in tax, and you might qualify. But if you have an exemption, the reverse is true because your tax allowance would be lower, you'd be paying less based on the exemption.
I was criticized a lot years ago because we were told that in the water, our sewers are benefit, everybody pays the same amount for debt service in our county. But water, that's more based on, you pay your debt based on the value of your property. And we were told that that's what that is for, not for operations you make at your own end. That should be a flat fee for every user. You should not be pushing the operation you make because of the added water portion. So I don't know how you would do that because your debt service pretty much remains stable, you know. Anything further on this, on these big remakes that are called on the... It could be a very situation too. That sounds really complicated, but a recent, well, two villages, all two towns, three towns? Anything further coming for Charlie? We have not drove for much, but huge, I think that...
Second to resolution, we don't want to...
They passed, didn't hold, the county's first, and the second. Charlie?
In Robie's absence, I would like to point out that all the two, the homes.
Two of those homes. Every time, because the cycles are bad.
I kind of thought there was one there. There's two?
Depending where you said.